Please leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh yeah, I sat down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a gentleman in our district called Violet. He was a foster out of Detroit well over fifty years. And he passed away just a few weeks ago. We've got him on the phone.
Before, what we're doing here is we're doing a Georgia farmer. Been thirty-eight years in our system. We're sitting by the French horn. He passed away. I agree, so I'd like to remember.
Everybody's gotta bear with us tonight. We've got these new machines in front of us. It's all good to see how we vote out there. First time. Call the meeting to order. Roll call. Everybody needs to sign in.
Mass yes and confirm for those that were absent from our training session. Two-step process for both. You confirm.
You confirm. The blue.
I came out of this for work, my glasses.
There you go.
I bet it.
Nope, get it again.
I'm like the F.
He's hit the wrong one.
There you go.
All right, do you mind if we knock you first? All right.
Actually, you need to read that in the rec.
Yeah, read that in the rec.
Oryx, present. Berg, present. Collins, present. Cregan, present. Field, present. Lawson, present. Ridge, present. Miller, present. Parker, present. Rutherford, present. Thank you.
All right, first thing we need to do is take a moment and go into executive session with our attorney. So we'll go back to the moment, Chair.
No reading.
I didn't go in well, listen. Well, we're down with, I think we've lost some of our crowd. We're down to recognition of guests. I think we've got Mr. Lindsey back there. Welcome. Mr. Julian, welcome. Everyone else, welcome. Next item is to approval of consent agenda. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Everybody ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Jeffrey's not working.
Yes and confirm.
Hit the blue. You want a second? All right. Does anybody wish to change their vote? All right, now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of regular agenda. I got a call before coming over from supervisor. We're going to remove item eight F from the agenda, please. If you can request it be removed. Make note of that, Jeffrey. Eight F. Items for action. All right, now what's the pleasure?
Make a motion to approve with the removal.
Our motion to approve. Second. Second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right, please cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes.
Thank you. Next item, comment from the chair. The only thing I have is just for information for Larry and the staff. Spoke with Stansville Legford this morning, Amy Goldsmith. She's the project manager for the red light at Carrollville going in. They're going to start next week with the grading. Week two, they're going to pour the concrete to the signal poles. Week three, they're going to pace the turning lanes. And in thirty days, we'll have a red light at Carrollville. Just so you know, but the passengers and staff, I understand that next thirty days, we'll look and get to that. Okay? Do you have anything for the director's monthly report? And Mr. Pope?
No.
Next item, seven, recognize Jeff Marlowe.
Mr. Chair. We have a monthly financial report sent out in your packet, beginning with General Purpose School Fund. You have packets, total, seven point eight three three million dollars. Come over one page, two pages. You'll see your revenues, production. You'll see we're at seventy-one percent of realization, twenty-seven point five four of the thirty-eight point seven eight six million. On point I figure top of the page there, property tax to ninety-five percent pounds. You guys heard me saying before, when we get to February, March, we need to be at ninety-five percent pounds. We're at ninety-five percent pounds. And that would anticipate that we would maintain forty, seeing the current property tax as one more page over. You'll see expenditure and appropriation sixty-two point three percent, so about nine to ten point pretty good, six point five point five million of the forty point nine five million being accounted or spent. The next report was the Federal Project School Fund. Cash to the trustee, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars, seventy-four cents. Over two pages. See your revenues. Add up, almost three point eight million dollars of the six point three million, sixty percent realization with your expenditures and appropriations, fifty-nine point eight percent, so almost in perfect balance, which is what we expect to see in this particular fund. And then the final fund, the Pacific Cafeteria Fund, that cash to trustee of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Over one page. You'll see revenue sixty-five point three percent and appropriate fifty-eight point five percent. So roughly seven to ten points pretty good in this fund presently. But you've got to remember that we haven't extended or accounted the funds for the equipment, which is a large appropriation program. That's closer to being back in the balance. I'll answer any questions you may have over any of the three funds. And if none, I'd like to get a motion to approve off here.
Motion first. What's the pleasure?
I'm going to motion, I second.
Any questions for Mr. Marlowe?
Jeff, on the one forty-one, thus being the expenses, thus being up two million dollars, is there something that's just not hit yet that will deplete that as far expense-wise? Are we looking like we're?
No. Your student system deals a spread that's ever increasing, it's going to give to May. When you get to May, you have six paychecks that go out to the teachers and bring all of that back into.
Into line. Okay.
Any other question? Are you ready to vote? All right, please cast your vote. If anyone wants to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Rutherford, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Field, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes. Motion, yes.
Our next item is budget amendments. We have six budget amendments. Some of them are reasonably standard and little commission. I like to review them in the record. Number one is important, and also number six is important, obviously, along with some. Budget amendment number one deals with coal service tax. And I live, my mom and dad's builder, I live in the packet on my life, and with I go up to daddy's duck, so everything's still on Sunday. In the last few years, there have been continuous mining operations in the state of Flack. Dean Chambers, the mine mayor, David Creed, another company. As the sun of the winter has unfolded, all, there were three, four operations, including one west. Now they are down to only one, and that operation is very diminished compared to what it was, and that's Dean. Dean's the only one doing what's there at all. And so coal service tax is off the pace. That's what has been, the mild winter has resulted in large stockpile of coal falling the ground. And the guys in the process of mining it obviously anticipated to get hundred, hundred twenty-five, hundred thirty dollars a ton for it. But now they got on the ground, and nobody's getting any of this weather, they let go for eighty-five of them. So that's an inverse relationship. That's exactly what happens in supply and demand. Very simple. We're affected by that. Coal service tax is one tax that has been included in school system, both along with the highway fund. But that's a fifty-fifty split between highway fund and the school fund and tax. I want to read this in the record for you. Whereas coal service tax estimated by twenty-eleven, twelve fiscal years, anticipated projected to be a hundred thousand dollars less than usually estimated due to decreased mining operations. Whereas based upon information obtained in the local year of mining, approximately two hundred and thirty thousand tons total mined in Campbell County during the ten-eleven fiscal year appears to have been erroneously attributed to mining operations in Anderson County with such time having coal service tax rate of fifty cents per ton, which should result in Campbell County receiving approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars half a week to be deposited in the highway fund and half a week to be deposited in the local school fund sometime in the next upcoming cycle of twelve thirteen as a one-time adjustment. And whereas it is estimated that an additional approximately a hundred and sixty thousand tons are total mined in Campbell County during the eleven, twelve fiscal years may also have been erroneously attributed to mining operations in Anderson County with such time having coal service tax rate of seventy-five cents per ton, which should result in Campbell County receiving approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars half a week to the highway fund and half a week to the local school fund sometime also in twelve thirteen years as a one-time adjustment. And whereas the projected hundred thousand dollar decrease in coal service tax for the twelve, eleven, twelve fiscal year will be spread by a decrease in natural gas, which is less anticipated due to the life and weather increases for eleven, twelve years. So the same exact causation that caused the total amount to have to be done, we have savings in those utilities, expenditures to offset it. You look at, see the A, see a decrease of coal service of a hundred thousand dollars and a decrease in natural gas, bringing our budget back into the line with the realized effect. The budget amendment number two is the general purpose school fund and deals with some miscellaneous free funds from Roman State Community College relative to building loan courses for students and college corporates incorporated into various classes. And these funds are being appropriated for additional classroom supplies, vocational education programs, which is offering college-bound classes. And whereas vocational education programs, students participating in regional states with decent national competition, these funds are being realigned to forty million. You see the fourteen hundred and eighty-five dollars is the money that's coming from Roman State and is being appropriated in construction of the five materials. Then you see some realignment increase in travel for those, not just a six thousand twenty dollars in decreases in features of twenty-four fifteen medical insurance off the back. So that's how that's represented in the balance out. Resolution three, the golfing general purpose school fund. And whereas personnel requirements and medical insurance participation in this year often different from the year before, therefore realignment of both line items in the meeting of the eleven, twelve year. And whereas the need exists to provide additional medical supplies for nursing programs, and whereas the need exists to provide funding to students in education, mental health facilities, see an increase in R O T C reimbursement, which is to get back back for the R O T C program in a way, so it's three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the insurance recovery is ninety-five hundred dollars. And see an assortment of increases and decreases in appropriation to make the minimum balance for the ninety-eight hundred and forty-eight dollar increase in both revenue and appropriation. Resolution four, also in the general purpose school fund. And this is to provide our field of risk insurance associated with our upcoming energy projects, the train, the toilet. We were able to save one percent on tax discount from our project, the local constant discount program. And that provided us with seventy-seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars of savings on our pay and the end debt. That's seventy-seven hundred dollars plus two hundred and seven dollars that was taken from other contracted services allows us to provide the seventy-nine hundred and ninety-five dollars that we did with this. So we all worked that perfectly in balance with where our plan was, but we got close to two hundred and seventy-five. And that's what this one does allow, and that is part of our contract to do, we have to provide it. Resolution five, within the federal project school fund, whereas schools have been notified of carryover funds going to the purchase focus program. And these funds have been approved to allow the purchase of student calculators and being appropriated to forty million. And we're in personnel requirements and this year often different than this year, we're allowing to. Exhibit E, you have grand total is two hundred dollars in the race to the top area fund, and that's the one for the two hundred dollars for the calculator. Then you have some miscellaneous realignment standards here, seven eighty-one and eight and sixteen hundred and thirteen dollars in medical insurance, and then decrease of supplies and drills, stacks of balance out for the grand total, two hundred dollars increase and two hundred dollars increase in appropriations. And then the final amendment deals partly with the discussion we had with the one student group funding a minute ago, dealing with equipment purchases. Whereas it's a desire to realign food, service, equipment fund as well as to appropriate digital funds, negative food service equipment, and further implementation of fourteen to five-year equipment upgrade plan as discussed last month's school meeting. And whereas food service operations had to replace a hot water heater and convection oven in elementary schools and convection oven in departmental schools would operate. See your exhibit F, and you will see the full makeup of what is to be undertaken with the presentation that he put on for the guys last month, as well as dealing with replacement of a few ovens and your hot water heater. At the end of the day, we'll end up with food service equipment at Carrollville, seventy-one, seventy-six. Six gives Jack Pearl Elementary School, sixty-four thousand, seventy-two dollars. Seven is Jack Pearl Middle School, one hundred and twenty-three, one ninety-two. Nine, Jellicoe High School, nine, seven hundred and sixty-five. Nineteen gives Quado, twenty-six, five thirteen, and Haversham at twenty, three hundred and twenty-five, four eighty-four. And that's just the plan that you already looked at in the first year last month. And we've had some small realignments, and then we had the increase of thirty-nine thousand three hundred dollars that poured into the plan about the last month. All right, that's all six of the amendments. I'd like to get a motion to approve. All sixteen, any questions? It's not a plan.
Don't have a whole lot to change this. The insurance plan that we got, the audit said, we're going to push the plan. Is either becoming with eight thousand five dollars?
Maybe. Probably sixty-nine, ninety. I'm afraid to say yes or no, but I specifically don't know. I do know that we had some insurance recovery here, and we used it in this amendment, and it disrupted seven thousand dollars, so maybe we'll be going with eight thousand.
The difference we have, please, though. Or we get to answer the dollars.
I, again, I'm hesitant to say yes we have, or no we haven't. I just wonder if we had some that were posted, nothing to talk about, because I see this as a.
And is Jellicoe, do you see any files about that?
I think we got paid on the next day.
And it's the school.
Oh, no, not that I know of. Not that I know of. The sale of the proceeds came through.
All right, what's the pleasure?
I'm making a motion to approve four dash one through four dash six, but I do want to ask a question.
I got a motion to approve all budget amendments. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I'll say. Now, quit.
Jeff, what's your thinking on the twelve thirteen appropriations for the coal service tax?
We're, the two paras is there that deal with the one-time method. Will provide in the school fund, significant, it's a hundred and twenty. And we produced our estimate from the current year estimate, the Daniel, by roughly a hundred thousand dollars going into next year. And I have a report here that points to it. Coal service tax in the one forty-one fund is presently estimated two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If we can maintain, let's say, hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars back, and we get our other hundred, hundred and twenty thousand back next year at one time, then our estimate would be close to the same amount here, but at least a hundred and twenty dollars if we one time, as I said, the fact is stabilizing to go in one more time. So I think it would go up to the same next year in aggregate, but with the knowledge that about a hundred and twenty dollars is one time hundred. And if those come back, then you would be looking at a recurring budget amount of about three to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and maybe less than that. And that's at seventy-five cents a ton.
Right.
We just went fifty cents a ton this past July before, and we were at a quarter freeze. So if you were looking at this number in relationship going backwards, that two point five has been there for four years, five years. So you're just going to show you how much less coal we mine, even though the rate doubled from a quarter to fifty cents, and then the rate increased from fifty cents to seventy-five cents, and the rate plans ongoing in July, twenty thirteen to a dollar, we're still to be down to half or a quarter of what you could get a quarter. Not good.
Any other questions for Mr. Marlowe? Now, if I hit this, no for Scott, it'll log you out, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I wanted you to do before you, before you went on.
Okay. Are you ready to vote? Time to cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes. Motion, yes.
All right.
We now have no bids this month, being reviewed, and we have no bids to ask, advertise for mission to do. So I'd assume they have prepared themselves. Out of who? We have a few contracts in the school, um, school district that need to be renewed and need for all renewals of bids from the previous year when they're in your package. We have one from Umattech, it's going to be one of these one-time deliveries.
It's going to be great.
Umattech Company for years control, cop, septic service for grease pumping, Campbell County fire equipment for heat infection cleaning, Merida Bakery for bread products, Flavor Ridge for milk product, Mapleberry for ice cream product, and Cook Fest Control for pest control services.
What's the pleasure?
Over.
Got a motion, got a second?
I'll say.
Any questions? Are you ready to vote? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes. Motion, yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Items for action? A, approved elementary final grade policy, second reading attachment. What's the pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve A, B, and C, because we've got, these are related, A and C, these are the second reading on the test policy and the graduation requirements. And B is a letter of notification required to send to the parents to tell them, of course, how this involves the family's life.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Of course, the TCAP, the TCAP portion of the final grade, that's a state, that's new state law, isn't it? That's coming down from the race to the top.
Any other question? Ready to vote? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Lawson, yes. Ridge, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes. Motion, yes.
Next item, D, approved textbook committee's list for adoption. I think Rita's back there somewhere. Your pleasure. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second?
Was this the thing at all?
I think I skipped.
It's middle school and high school, it's just middle and high school.
And this? Is that new book for that year?
You're ordering them up?
Oh, yes, it's our mine.
Any other question? Are you ready to vote? Cast your vote. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Now's the vote.
Oryx, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cregan, yes. Lawson, yes. Lawson, yes. Lynch, yes. Miller, yes. Ruth, yes. Ruth, yes.
Item D, approve seamless summer fees program to Elk Valley, Jellico High and Campbell County High School.
You want to touch on that? Each year the county, uh, through the new Christian program that comes, some fees programs that not only can students come into the school to move their education along, but also it is provided in the community to buy the schools and afford them again new things that God likes in the new Christian program that comes. And those three sides sat aligned without further places.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
The most have a second?
Second, the most.
Any questions? Ready to vote? Cast your vote. Wish to change your vote? Announce the vote.
Orak, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Creighton, yes. Lawson, yes. Lynch, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Ruth, yes. Mission, yes.
Next item's been deleted. Um, thank you to not item for discussion, update from Fay Comer regarding individual school activity. Fay, you want to come up? Looks like we went up a little bit this past one.
Last time I recorded at Valley, we had some technical difficulties, uh, because we can't, you know, there were good media and we can fix that. We scored all the information and verified her number yesterday, which is on the recording sheet today. Nobody's in the data, so there's any parts to record or anything. So, we'll go to Wado tomorrow and, um, close that administration out so that the incoming principal will know exactly where they start. And, uh, of course, we're in the process of getting the new signature set.
Did you get the data recovered?
Yes, yes. Uh, so, new paperwork and everything, we're probably fed back to them. We are having a software issue currently at Jellico Elementary School, we're working with the software company on that.
Thank you, Fay. Discuss legal matters?
Of course, my gal.
Spoken like a trueter.
Bell's had a hard week. All right, discuss committee report, update from education committee.
That's the first one.
Building committee, Mr. Ripley.
Uh, we got started over Jellico Elementary, I'll lay for a second. Uh, things are moving along for good, that's raining, big, good shape. Uh, having building committee meeting on Thursday at six o'clock will be quite a few things come up in that committee. I'd encourage if I can to be there. We're going to tackle the, uh, more discussion on the building usage policy. I'd like to have everybody's input on that to do it. Uh, East Pollock's coming along great. Uh, we've got a lot of the feeling done in the back on our front. The board member, Mitch Berg, he's worked for the city, saved the system a lot of money. Uh, just being able to see dirt donated and get this, so we've done a little well there. Doing praise classes, doing great on the inside. We're probably at about sixty-five percent pension. Uh, we're just continuing on, we want to stop getting some time with the hospital at Barney, uh, they did a great job, many of them. Uh, still haven't gotten anything rolling in Jellico yet. Everything is pretty, plans are pretty, fire marshal's pretty, some of that, we'll talk about that later. Other than that, pretty good.
Before you move on from there, uh, I need to let Richt know where everybody else.
We got the, uh, team, team for the, uh, slot at Jellico, uh, came in, uh,
How much?
Call it fifteen grand, something like that, thirteen to six, I'm going to be back final figure. We did get notification that it, uh, did get approved and the money, we either have it in our hands or it's on the, uh,
He's probably be here tomorrow. Thirteen to six, like that one. So, you'll be able to undertake that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Richter, what's the next step we need to do for the, uh, bathrooms that they will follow?
Ray was, and I apologize for my tolerance, Ray was supposed to lead the contract, which he said he can give us the right on getting the foundation out there and the block work until they finish. So, between there and there, there's just, uh, not going to be started. And I told him that it's something that we need to get started. It's only a agenda, it's not a plan. So, the board feels like we want to move in that direction, that we need to go ahead and prove it so we can get Scott, it's never been approved.
Okay, okay.
So, if we can do that, then possibly something would be made.
Okay.
We'll be ready for this.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing, Richter, is we've had several calls on his defense in the for all it, elementary?
Yeah, he's all meaningful.
Okay.
Do you have anything else? Anything to build, give us anything else, we can go into the first.
Uh, acting committee, Mr. Creighton?
I mean, they have a meeting, uh, Thursday, five-thirty, or something.
Finance committee, Scotty had to go to the funeral. He asked that, uh, make everybody aware that Gil has sent out some emails about the change of the finance committee meetings. So, check your iPads if you have an email. Uh, marketing committee, the only thing I could not, uh, reach, uh, read today, tied up, I requested him send all the board members a email giving us the status on the deed research that he's doing. So, we should have that as well. Uh, recognize school board members, Mr. Collins?
One thing, uh, brought my attention this evening that, uh, teachers, um, conference room or whatever, Jellico High School, they're opening out in the hall since the bell rings. About the time some teacher's coming out, it could be a hazard, I don't know, but, uh, we need to get maintenance, check it. I believe Mr. Chippwood has already requested the hand this big chance, so it's open. I don't know whether he has an offer, we need to check on that. And, uh, we need to get Ray or just Mel and Gold out to Elk Valley. The slave got a little problem, uh, trying to find a place to, uh, so a whole, uh, teacher's meeting, so she would be, you know, an alcoholic or fully probed. So, she'll work with us, tell you where she got away with that, see what we can do with that.
Okay.
That's the whole, I wouldn't open the hall in. Yeah, I can't open it. Although I feel like it'll open.
Yeah, I think that's wrong.
I would like to have that. Keep in mind, with the new fire marshal we have now, anything you do has to have a draw. You have to have what's called P O C or L O C letter, that's the intent of what you want to do. You don't, she goes to these schools quite often. And the reason why we had so much trouble out of Wado wasn't so much what we did is to accomplish the mission and stuff. So, anything we try to do at this point on has to be submitted to her or she's going to, she's going to give us a go. And we don't want her on our backs after. So, she's, she's already getting ready to recommend something to Campbell County High School, and I hope she don't, and I'm not even going to breathe. We just need to do what the folks do now. Because we've cost a ton of money to go back in that system. Not to say we can't do it, I'm just saying we have to, have to do it. It's a little different than used to be, rather than just going in there.
You can go on a weekend and do a picture.
Yeah, I get Mr. Marlowe here.
Mr. Lawson? Creighton, don't have anything, sir?
Berg? No. I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Harper, uh, it's that time of year, end of the school year, a lot of teachers asking about placement and how that's going to work. I was going to wonder, seems like there's some, maybe some misinformation floating around. I was wondering if you cleared up on how placement and things are going to work this year?
On May first, this one, this thing earlier, it's all sort of science fully, uh, given form later that it can create that type of year. And in that later, it says about you accept, uh, objective position and also this case in this, uh, involvement, of course. From that, I mean, there is a vacancy at school aid that will be posted on the list. So, like you say, that's a main position, school aid, that will be posted on the list. So, then any teacher that has the prep certification to the, uh, the campus, with the prep school, go to the prep school interview and then, of course, that would have to come back to the director of school for proof.
I'd like to add to that, and ask a question, you know, did it ask that by any, or her or now, I think they first. And we were, we were requesting that Scotty was going to give us an update on what we looked at as far as having pictures, space and, and all that. Does that still want to happen on May first or are we going to get any kind of information like that at any point in time?
I can take that as a fact, the director goes.
Because, I mean, I'm a jock, a lot of people are asking what's going to happen. And we keep pushing the information line out, it's going to happen in the garbage, whether we know anything about it or not.
When is the B T numbers in this week?
It's probably the beginning of May.
How many, how many, uh, the, the process for filing for retirement things, that period's come and gone, how many?
April first.
How many did we have filed with paperwork?
Next slide, I think it's four from there.
Uh, I want to say it's fourteen, we have areas, house, we have.
Some are staggered where they may not retire now, then our six. But we'll try to have all that at that May first.
Coleman? Dave? All right, so have most adjourned.
Most adjourned.